Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. And look at all my hands.
You shouldn't want people to be surprised coming up here. The matter is, we've been carrying them all day. That's what you want there. Yeah. All change. I saw you. She was here.
Okay. 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 We're not going. All right. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. I don't forget.
Next off.
Okay. 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 We're not going. All right. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. I don't forget. I'm glad you're here. Okay. Okay. Sorry. No. Okay. We're not going. All right. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. I don't forget. I'm glad you're here. Okay. Okay. We're not going. All right. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. I don't forget. I'm glad you're here. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting board. Pledge of belief. My plea is to comply with the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, all nation, and do things with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, can you please say a prayer?
Mr. Borowski.
Here.
Mr. Cora.
Present.
Mrs. Rory.
Here.
Mr. Oliger.
Present.
Mr. Montani.
Here.
Mrs. Seppson.
Here.
Mrs. Traynor.
Here.
Missine.
Here.
And Dr. Mary Aron.
Uh, present. Okay, on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Sagna.
Um, we want to thank staff, students, custodians, and community members for another successful celebration. I saw a few people up here, up there. It was a great night. I had a great time and learned a lot about the community and people. Also, Shrek the Musical or Middle School is putting on, Shorter Fugue will be Shrek the Musical starting Wednesday, April ninth through Saturday, April twelfth at the High School Auditorium. Tickets are available online and it should be a great performance. That is the end of the announcements.
Okay, Dr. Sagna. Okay, before I begin, I believe the folks from Nutrition Inc. are here. Thank you, thank you. The Nutrition Inc. group is here to present their annual presentation of the board, so I'd like them to come up now, if that's okay. You can go first. You know what? If you're gonna use that screen, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them wait, okay? We're gonna do our preliminary budget first and then under superintendent report, you guys will be next, okay? All right. So, board members, it's time. We take off the front row. We would like the board members to sit in the front row. We're gonna use this screen to show our preliminary budget presentation. Since the screen comes in front of the board or sitting here, we're gonna ask the board to come down there. Thank you. They may cover a couple of ours. We're gonna change course. Since Nutritioning is loaded on the computer first, the board members are here, we're gonna go ahead and let Nutritioning go and do their presentation, we'll do the preliminary budget. Do you have other comments on how to handle that?
Skipping it there later.
Yeah, we're gonna do that after the announcement.
To clarify, uh, because we will have public comment after this announcement.
Good evening, everybody. Just here to give a quick update for our food service mid-year update and to kind of forecast and look at what our budget will look like for next school year. So to give a kind of recap on what's been going on this school year here in the Food Service Department, we've had a lot of awesome, exciting events happen in the cafeteria so far. You can see there, we've had Molly the Cow visit at the primary school. We've held Wellness Wednesdays at the intermediate school and primary schools. We had a really nice certified action station right after the new year in January. We hosted holiday carving stations for Easter or upcoming for Easter, and then we had one for Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then we had some Grave Day events. This past or about a week ago, we had a intermediate school Grave Day event where we hosted and celebrated the home opener coming up. We introduced rope and tea this year and had some vendor partner days where we were able to partner with our produce company and do some sampling for the students. These are just some of our other programs that we offer here at Shorter Fugue Valley. Our Nutrition for Life program will be one of them. We did at the beginning of the school year, all of our kindergarten students got to eat for free for three days. And then upcoming in May, we have a fruity Fridays event at the primary school where the students will be able to make their own fruit salad and learn about the benefits of some fruits that they are familiar with. Looking at our participation for this school year. So if you look there on the right, what our budget was going into this school year for breakfast, lunch, and a la carte. A little bit behind for breakfast going into halfway through the school year. Lunch a little bit ahead of budget and a la carte looking very nice halfway through the school year into the end of the year. Looking at the financial end, again, if you look in the right-hand column there, that is our budget through the month of March for our revenue and expenses. And then that brings us down to our bottom line coming in at about ninety-eight thousand dollars per budget. And then if you look over on our left-hand column there, that's what we are at currently through the month of March. So some considerations for our upcoming budget. Our current participation is what we base off our future budget for. Breakfast will still be free to all students going into next school year, and our food costs projected at a five percent increase, and our labor and cleaning costs are projected at an eight percent increase going into next year's budget. This is just a nice breakdown of all the categories, what makes the budget, from our cash sales to reimbursement, our other income, just for special functions and our thirty-eighty-six contracts. That equals out to our revenue and then down to our expenses, it's the bottom line. So looking into next school year is your middle-hand column comparison to last year's budget. Top right corner will show you our budget for this year, what we're actually doing, and then what our budget numbers look like going into next school year. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, at this time, Dr. Sagnon.
We can't hear you.
At this time, can you hear that?
Pick it up.
Let's do it this way.
Say, pick it up.
At this time, Dr. Sagnon, myself and Ms. Wright, got to present twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budgets. The completed budget would be on the board agenda to approve. If approved, it will be on display tomorrow at the business office for every day, and it will be also available online through a link through our website. Before I begin, I want to thank Ms. Wright, this is our last board meeting with us as a business manager. I do have a motion that I'm requesting the board to approve her to stay on as a consulting role to get us through the final AFR for this year. She is moving on to green her pastures, on a museum. She's been a great colleague, a friend of mine, and has really helped me in all aspects of my job. So thank you from me, best of luck to you. Okay, so Ms. Wright and I, back in January, April the twenty-eighth, we presented to the public and to the board a very early budget. We did that to discuss numerous concerns that we were identifying. Particules of deficit, of course, but also the need, the three hundred dollars, to drive them towards core academics and safety and security. We made that our goal as we proceeded those next ninety days. This is a district snapshot, as you will see, this is today. This is April eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Our students, our current employees, the teens and athletes, so this is just a snapshot of the district. Moving into next year, the cause of the talent that we approved and the earlier retirement incentive and Act Ninety-Three positions we consolidated, we will have less than six-hundred-and-sixty current employees. We do expect the student number to be very close to go to start next year. Our current conditions in the district, everyone knows there's uncertainty from Washington D.C. where they go federal title funding. We receive about seven-hundred-thousand dollars into the budget. We are in a holding pattern as if, as is everyone else across the United States as to what's gonna happen with those federal dollars. We are promised in local discussions that that money will be reallocated to the states and then allocated from the states to the school districts, so that we should be okay, but there's just a lot of unknown and uncertainty there. As everyone knows, state allocations for basic and special ed funding remain flat while costs increase, everything costs going up. The healthcare, obviously, is something we've already discussed. There's a five-point-seven percent increase for medical and then, of course, three percent for dental and vision. Another common problem every school district out of County is facing in the last two years is the common level ratio. A few years ago, it was over eighty percent, in twenty-twenty-five, it's fifty-two point seven. So that means you're losing tax valuation that's coming into the district without already doing anything. Increased costs for supplies, materials, technology, et cetera. We have a growing special education in the adult population, those are two of our most expensive populations, the students as well, and there are unfunded landings to support that. And then, of course, the expenditures that have already been committed from the beginning, fund balance for debt service, our contractual salaries and benefits, and our Peers or Toner rate increase to thirty-four percent. I'm going to now let Ms. Wright explain our current fund balance.
Thank you, Dr. Sagna. So this provides a historical, a projected, and a budgeted look at total fund balances for the district. I think an important thing to note here is that each fund in color has a specific restricted purpose in which you are used to allocate those funds. So you can see here in that far-left column, that large red block, that is for capital projects. That comes after a bond issuance in two thousand and twenty-one, and those funds are restricted for the purposes issued, uh, that the bond was issued for. Those funds cannot be reallocated and repurposed to use for our general fund operating. They can't be used for salaries and benefits. So as you can see here, the proposed budget that we are proposing tonight maintains the general fund budget of five-point-eight million dollars. That's okay. So, this is this evening's proposed budget in the functional expenditures. As you can see, salaries and benefits remain the largest category, and historically, that is always the largest category of operations for a district. You can see that between last year's budget, proposed budget of seven-point-six million, uh, seventy-nine-point-six million dollars to this year's budget of seventy-nine million dollars, we made a one percent decrease in total overall expenditures, which actually is representative of a ten percent de- uh, decrease from our initial January budget. Again, coming back to personnel expenditures, the largest expenditure of the district. As you will see, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is on the left. The initial budget that we spoke about in January, those are the categories and what the deficit that we were facing in January. And on the right is the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget in the different categories and the expenditures related to those categories. As a result of the ERI and curtailment of programs, there's a four-point-four million-dollar difference between the initial budget that we talked about in January and the proposed budget that we are bringing this evening.
So I want to talk about some specific expenditure items that we have identified that need to be addressed. So first and foremost, let's talk about our transportation subsidy and cost. The certified school district received eighteen-point-three percent of transportation cost reimbursement in Pennsylvania transportation subsidy. It's a very complex formula that the Department of Education uses to reimburse school districts for the cost of transport students. It includes many factors like passenger capacity, the aid ratio, the cost index, and then vehicle factors like age, mileage, et cetera. So the goal is to get as much back from the state in subsidy. In layman's terms, the state wants to help you pay for transportation, but they put parameters on it, so they're not just writing a blank check back to you. When you look at our transportation subsidy coverage compared to forty-three schools in Alagany County, we're the sixth, thirty-sixth lowest on subsidy, okay? Thirty-six of forty-three districts in the county. It's important to note that three of those forty, uh, forty-three districts, Still Valley, Brentwood, and Mount Lebanon do not bus in-house students. They only bus private, parochial, specialized transportation. So there's really forty districts with the same transportation model as, as Shorter Fugue Valley. The third bullet, we ranked fourth highest in transportation cost per student in the county. Twenty-three districts out of forty-three that spend more per student to transport kids. Our total budget and transportation cost for twenty-five, twenty-six is five-point-one-four million. That is before we receive any subsidy. That's our expense. So I did a little bit of a data dive, and I tried to pull the latest county supply data for all transportation in Alagany County. The last publicly available numbers are from twenty-two, twenty-three. So you'll see all forty-three school districts listed on the left from top to bottom based upon their percentage of subsidy reimbursement, okay? If you look on the right, that is the cost per student. So we are in this area here, and our cost per student per day is twelve-hundred dollars per day. I'm sorry. Year, sorry. Per year. So if you go down the list, I always use West Jefferson Hills as a reference point. They're busing for six-hundred dollars a day. So they're busing two students per year, two students to ours in their transportation model compared to where we are. I know this is a little bit hard to read, so we broke the graph down a little bit larger for some comparisons. So I thought these were good examples. So the first category is their average daily membership, their number of students they're reporting. Plum is three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three students, West Jefferson Hill, three-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-nine, Moon, four-thousand-one-hundred-and-six, and Shorter Fugue Valley, three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighteen. Again, this was twenty-two, twenty-three school years. Then you can look at their transportation subsidies, which then equates to their final transportation expense. Plum is larger than us. They have their own in-house transportation of it. They don't contract out. This is in-house, and their total transportation expense is three-point-seven million a year. Moon buses roughly six-hundred more students every day than we do, and their total transportation cost is three-point-three million a year. And you can see how much more they have being covered by subsidies, proving that they are running way more efficiently than we are. That's a number we have to change. If you break it down per student cost, okay, Shorter Fugue Valley, so the net transportation cost was that five-point-three-million-dollar expense minus what we received in subsidy, take those same four school districts and take their per student cost per year, and we're doubled. We're doubled. And again, Plum has in-house transportation, they don't contract out. So this was the reference I kept giving publicly. I even gave it last media parkway when I was talking about West Jefferson Hills. How are they able to bus thirty-three-hundred students at two-point-one-million dollars a year? Two million, two-point-two-million less than us. Ms. Wright?
So this graph represents the major sources of, uh, revenue for this proposed budget. As you can see, the vast majority is in the blue, that's coming from local resources. That's local real estate, urban town, commercial taxes. There's also some private grants and funding through the AIU included in there. The red represents our state funds through Pennsylvania, which primarily is the state subsidy for basic and special education funding. Our federal, as Dr. Sagna said, is seven-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. It's a small piece of our budget, but still an important one for the programs and children that it serves. And then you will see there's five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars of debt service fund balance that would be utilized in order to balance the budget.
Everyone knows there's uncertainty from Washington DC where they go federal title money. We receive about seven hundred thousand dollars into the budget. We are in a holding pattern as if, as is everyone else across the United States. As to what's gonna happen with those federal dollars. We are promised in local discussions that that money will be reallocated to the states and then allocated from the states to the school districts. So that we should be okay, but there's just a lot of unknown and uncertainty there. As everyone knows, state allocations for basic and special ed funding remain flat, uh, while costs increase, everything costs going up. The healthcare obviously is something we've already discussed. There's a five point seven percent increase for medical and then of course three percent for dental and vision. Another common problem every school district in County is facing in the last two years is a common level ratio. A few years ago it was over eighty percent, in twenty twenty-five it's fifty-two point seven. So that means you're losing tax valuation that's coming into the district without really doing anything. Uh, increased costs for supplies, materials, technology, et cetera. Uh, we have a growing special education in the adult population. Those two are most expensive populations of students as well, and there are unfunded landings to support that. And then of course the expenditures that have already been committed from the beginning, um, fund balance for debt service are contractual salaries and benefits. And our P S R's are currently ranked in, increased to thirty-four percent. I'm going to now let Ms. Wright explain our current fund balance.
Thank you, Dr. Castagna. So this provides a historical, a projected and a budgeted look at total fund balances for the district. I think an important thing to note here is that each fund in color has a specific restricted purpose in which you are used to allocate those funds. So you can see here in that far left column, that large red block, that is for capital projects. That comes after a bond issuance in two thousand and twenty-one. And those funds are restricted for the purposes issued, uh, that the bond was issued for. Those funds cannot be reallocated and repurposed to use for our general fund operating. They can't be used for salaries and benefits. So as you can see here, um, the proposed budget that we are proposing tonight maintains the general fund budget of five point eight million dollars. That's okay. So this is this evening's proposed budget in the functional expenditures. As you can see, salaries and benefits remain the largest category and historically that is always the largest category of operations for a district. You can see that, uh, between last year's budget, um, proposed budget of seven point six million, uh, seventy-nine point six million dollars to this year's budget of seventy-nine million dollars. We made a one percent decrease in total overall expenditures, which actually is representative of a ten percent de- uh, decrease from our initial January budget. Again, coming back to personnel expenditures, the largest expenditure of the district. Um, as you will see, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is on the left. The initial budget that we spoke about in January, uh, those are the categories and what the deficit that we were facing in January. And on the right is the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget in the different categories and the expenditures related to those categories. As a result of the E R I and curtailment of programs, there's a four point four million dollar difference between the initial budget that we talked about in January and the proposed budget that we are bringing this evening.
So I want to talk about some specific expenditure items that we have identified that need to be addressed. So first and foremost, let's talk about our transportation subsidy and cost. The certified school district received eighteen point three percent of transportation costs reimbursed in Pennsylvania Transportation Subsidy. It's a very complex formula that the Department of Education uses to reimburse school districts for the cost of transport students. It includes many factors like passenger capacity, the aid ratio, the cost index, and then vehicle factors like age, mileage, et cetera. So the goal is to get as much back from the state in subsidy. In layman's terms, the state wants to help you pay for transportation, but they put parameters on it, so they're not just writing a blank check back to them. When you look at our transportation subsidy coverage compared to forty-three schools in Alagany County, we're the sixth, thirty-sixth lowest on subsidy, okay? Thirty-six of forty-three districts in the county. It's important to note that three of those forty, uh, forty-three districts, Still Valley, uh, Bradley, Mont Lebanon, do not bus in-house students. They only bus private, parochial, specialized transportation. So there's really forty districts with the same transportation model as, as Charters Valley. The third bullet, we ranked fourth highest in transportation cost per student in the county. Twenty-three districts out of forty-three that spend more per student than transport kids. Our total budget in transportation cost for twenty-five, twenty-six is five point one four million. That is before we receive any subsidy. That's our expense. So I did a little bit of a data dive and I tried to pull the latest county by data for all transportation in Alagany County. The last publicly available numbers are from twenty-two, twenty-three. So you'll see all forty-three school districts listed on the left from top to bottom based upon their percentage of subsidy reimbursement, okay? If you look on the right, that is the cost per student. So we are in this area here and our cost per student per day is twelve hundred dollars per day. I'm sorry, yeah, sorry. Per year. So if you go down the list, I always use West Jefferson Hills as a reference point. They're busing for six hundred dollars a day. So they're busing two students per year, two students to ours in their transportation model compared to where we are. I know this is a little bit hard to read, so we broke the graph down a little bit larger for some comparisons. So I thought these were good examples. So the first category is their average daily membership, their number of students they're recording. Uh, Plum is three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three students. West Jefferson Hill, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. Moon, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six, and Charters Valley, three thousand, five hundred and eighteen. Again, this was twenty-two, twenty-three school years. Then you can look at their transportation subsidies, which then equates to their final transportation expense. Plum is larger than us. They have their own in-house transportation of it. They don't contract out, this is in-house, and their total transportation expense is three point seven million a year. Moon buses roughly six hundred more students every day than we do, and their total transportation cost is three point three million a year. And you can see how much more they have being covered by subsidies, proving that they are running way more efficiently than we are. That's a number we have to change. If you break it down for student costs, okay? Charters Valley, so the net transportation cost was that five point three million dollar expense minus what we received in subsidy. Take those same four school districts and take their per student cost per year and we're doubled. We're doubled. And again, Plum has in-house transportation, they don't contract out. So this was the reference I kept giving publicly. I even gave it last media partway when I was talking about West Jefferson Hills. How are they able to bus thirty-three hundred students at two point one million dollars a year? Two million, two point two million less than us. Ms. Wright?
So this graph represents the major sources of, uh, revenue for this proposed budget. As you can see, the vast majority is in the blue, that's coming from local, uh, resources. That's local real estate, urban town, commercial taxes. There's also some private grants and, uh, funding through the A I U included in there. The red represents our state front funds through Pennsylvania, which primarily is the, uh, state subsidy for basic and special education funding. Our federal, as Dr. Castagna said, is seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, it's a small piece of our budget, but still an important one for the programs and children that it serves. And then you will see, uh, there's five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of debt, uh, service fund balance that would be utilized in order to balance the budget.
So I have met with several parents in my first ninety days here, and the question I always get is how do we get here and where are we going? And so I want to summarize that as part of our budget presentation. So first, how do we get here? Well, back in January, Ms. Wright and I presented to the board a few data points that landed on our laps. First, um, we received a warning of targeted school improvement for our special education department at the high school. We had to address that in corrective action to the state. We had a warning from S and P about our home rating being downgraded. And then of course, we labeled this point of our ranking in the Pittsburgh Business Times, which shows a ten-year academic performance decline. Doing our homework in this presentation, we found the twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation from April twenty twenty-four. So this meeting last year, the former manager, business manager, told the public and the board that when you get to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which is what we're preparing right now, she projected in twenty-four, twenty-five that the twenty-five, twenty-six budget deficit would be seven point one million dollars. I think Ms. Wright and I in January said it was at seven point three. What she recommended was you would have to plan to use three point four million in general fund, uh, balance to, to pool, and then pool five hundred and fifty thousand from debt stabilization. And that would still leave you with a three million dollar deficit that you have to figure out a plan to address. That's what was told publicly last year. So everything we uncovered in January and February has already been on the table and discussed. The aggressive cuts, the aggressive early retirement incentive was approved. What did that actually equate to? Well, you'll see to the right there, what we're presenting with you today. We ended up now with only a five hundred and forty-one thousand dollar deficit, which we pulled from debt stabilization, meaning there's zero remaining budget. That was the heavy work we had to do these last ninety days. This was the S and P global release that we found in January. I just want to call your attention to the last sentence. It says we could revise the outlook to stable if the district is able to balance its operating budget without using reserves. That's what we did. That is favorable back to the S and P, to hopefully not impact our operating. So we know about the Pittsburgh Business Times ranking, and the question is, how do we get to fifty-two? How do we decline ten years in a row and what is happening there? Well, let's talk about that. First, where are we right now? So as we stand here in April of twenty twenty-five, the board has approved their talent programs. They approved and had thirty teachers accept the best early retirement incentive in county. Uh, one of the first moves I recommended to the board in my seventh day here was to replace solicitors and go to a flat legal fee that cut our solicitor bills in half. And we immediately began to combine act ninety-three administrative positions in central office. We reduced department non-personal spending, it was just blanket cuts across the board. This budget that we're presenting tonight maintains your tax bill rates, and we have pending tax litigation that we feel very confident that will be resolved before the final budget is approved. So that's where we are right now. Financially, now we have to talk about where are we academically? And the best way I can explain the academic decline, the core academic decline in the last ten years, was that we did not adopt the philosophy of standards-based instruction. That's the easiest way to put it. As per the chapter four regulations, all of us as certified teachers have to teach the standards. The standards outlined will become the eligible content, which is creates the P S S A exams in which our students are tested once a year, okay? There are some philosophies out there that students are overtested and that schools are timid creativity, we need to do much testing. I do believe there's a balance between that, where you have to work and operate, but that balance here has been skewed. We had no focus or emphasis on data-driven instruction and testing. And that's unfair to our students because we don't even give them a chance to perform on those summative exams once a year. Back in two thousand thirteen, the best man in Department of Education came up with this P V O S growth model. I love this as an educator because in layman's terms, the easiest way I can explain it, if you're a fifth grade teacher and you have twenty-five students in your class that enter on the first day of school on a third grade reading level, it's pretty sure that no matter what you do, they're not going to be proficient at a fifth grade reading level at the end of that year. That would mean they grew two years. But if you have a class full of students that enter your class at a third grade reading level and they lead you at a fourth grade reading level, you have shown one year's worth of growth. So it's a way to show that you're instructing students and you're guiding and meeting their needs, even if they're not passing the P S S A exam. So as educators, we like these. As administrators, we like them because we got to drill down to the classroom and student level and see what instruction was happening and the progress going that time. So what I want to point out to you, um, is the scale. Okay, so the colors matter. We always, and you're gonna hear me say in this presentation, we always want to go blue. We want to be above or well below significant growth, okay? Uh, the green just means we've met our growth standard for normal instruction for the year. We don't want to be in the below and well below range, okay? Significant evidence that the LAIR district did not meet the growth standard. Students are not growing at the rate they should be. I also want to point out these little parentheses at the beginning and at the end. So they use these when the growth index extends past the graph. So if your scores are below the well below category, they put this little parentheses here. If they exceed it on the right, they put that little blue parentheses there, okay? So everyone agrees P V O S data provides a more comprehensive picture of a school's impact on individual student achievement, uh, a better picture than P S S As. So I just put this in there again, it's the colors that you're looking for. Dark blue, light blue, that's significant, we want to stay out of the red. So I pulled our P V O S data. This is our value add assessment of monitored growth. And this is where we are, this is two thousand and twenty-four. First things we need to celebrate, we need to celebrate grade five. Not only are they in the dark blue, they have a parentheses, which means they've exceeded that expectation of growth in both math and English, English and language arts. So fifth grade is doing a great job, okay? If you look at these other sides though, four, six, okay, our overall score is well below. Especially four and six, they have a parentheses because our achievement was well beyond the significant decline, okay? And if you go into our English language charts, we are doing better in English language charts than we are math. But if you see the sixth and eighth grade math, this is why we blocked and we presented to the board blocking math next year for grades six, seven, and eight, and eight in the double period. Another thing that's concerning is Keystone. Our Keystone algebra exams, we are failing, okay? Um, typically in other districts, everyone takes algebra, um, starting in middle school most of the time. By ninth grade, everyone's taking the algebra Keystone. Typically, you see more of a struggle with the Keystone bio and the Keystone literature. But this is a clear indication, going back to what's happening in sixth and what's happening in fourth, that we have a problem with our math curriculum right now, and it's not staying in place. So I started saying to myself, when did this begin? When did this decline start to happen? So I pulled that grade six, this is all grade six P V O S data for the last six years, which as far as I can pull, if you look to the right, it's negative growth every single year. And every year it has that parentheses because it's well below the well below category. Same thing with the algebra Keystone. We can't watch this and not do anything about it. We have to change that, okay? When you see things like negative twenty-five or twenty-four, yes, because we're coming out of COVID years. I did that, but this is unacceptable. You have wonderful students in this district, wonderful. They're the best P A kids I've ever been around, walking around these buildings. We've got to do better by them, we have to. So I summarize the math district data, the average growth index for the math P S S A. Now, P S S A is the summative, once a year exam. Since two thousand and eighteen, it's down four point three. It's a, it's a decline of six years. All that math P S S A, the district's moved fifty-seven, when two students were being efficient, down to fifty-three. So half of our students are passing. This is the worst fact. Our ninth grade, I'm calling it ninth grade, but it's the algebra Keystone that was taken eighth to ninth. We have moved from passing to not only failing, to nearly one standard deviation below the median, which does not meet the composite graduation requirement. That's why you're getting hit by the Pittsburgh Business Times. This is why our scores are declining every year. Have to develop a model of data-driven construction. Okay, where are we headed? So number one, as I said in January, we have to focus on core academics and we have to go blue, as you saw tonight. And that doesn't mean that the students are all of a sudden going to be proficient and our sixth grade math students next year are all going to score advanced. That just means they're going to grow. They're going to show growth that we would expect when they enter. So we started with the math testing, the quarterly exams. Just started to drill down, see where are our students weaknesses. So there's three things that exist in curriculum. You have your written curriculum, which we've already exposed with curriculum study. It doesn't exist in some places. You have your taught curriculum because every teacher does cover every topic across the board, we all know that. But most importantly, what's our learned curriculum? You only expose that learned curriculum when you start truly having that data formative assessments quarterly. Teachers will say all the time, I taught that four times. I can't believe my kids didn't get that. Well, we want to know that in October, we don't want to know that in May. That's why you start those math tests. So we're going to focus on category of instruction. And we're going to integrate STEM home grades K to twelve with a goal of one after-school robotics lab competing in grades three to six. We have a very aggressive plan in, in this building right here. We already have commercials. Uh, I feel very confident that it's going to love us here, next year. Uh, new safety initiatives, we have a R F B out there for in-person security guards. We are upgrading our A I cameras, door access and controls. We want to adopt a model of proactive security instead of reactive. We want alerted when doors are open, we want alerted when somebody's on campus, it's not supposed to be. We don't want to find out about it after something happens and then go watch cameras. And that's the reactive model we are currently following. And we are preserving longstanding programs, twenty-one offer A P courses, A D offer college and high school. We kept all of our mental health services in-house and out of, outside of district. They come in-house and our shield program, we still assist students that have management-related social and emotional needs. We kept all of our dance theater hours. And we have a very large vocational tech room in Barbey. So you are Barbey, I'll tell you that right now. And, and, uh, our students are doing phenomenal things at Barbey. I went for a certain test today this morning and I took a couple students over there. I want to leave you with one final thought, board members. So I was, I was a first grade teacher when I started my career and I thought I'd kind of summarize this. And it was a, a book and a reference we always use with our students. And I used it with, with six-year-olds. But as I moved out, I was a sister first of all, high school, I started working with older kids. It universally applies, okay? And there's children's book, it's really for students that have problems with anxiety or they're overthinkers, okay? And it's called The Boy, the Horse, the Fox, and the Bull, okay? And in the story, and I'm paraphrasing, of course, these aren't my words, but in the story, the boy is leading a horse on a path and they get lost and they run to the end of the horse. And he gets scared and he starts, he says, I can't see, I can't see, I'm always through, the trees and the brush are blocking my view. And the horse says, can you see your next step? And the horse says, yes. The horse says, just take that. So so often, we are consumed with where we have to get to and the anxiety of this tremendous task of changing academic decline, of changing all these initiatives we have to address. It would be so caught up in all those conversations and all the wrong things that we still have to take the first step. I think today, in my professional opinion, this is your next step. Prove this budget, change this district, and start making progress. Thank you, Mrs. Go back.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to all the comments.
Yes, this is the time when any resident can talk about agenda items. If you've already signed up, we appreciate your comments. And Kelly, did anyone, please keep your comments to about three minutes, thank you. Kelly, did anyone sign up?
Yes. First is Samantha Fuller. Samantha Fuller.
Good evening, Samantha Fuller, fourteen fifty-two, Green Tree Road. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the future of this district, not just financially, but educationally. In January, we told this community, Charters Valley faced a nine million dollar projected deficit. What followed were painful decisions. Teachers furloughed, programs cut, and classrooms stretched thin. Families were told those sacrifices were necessary. Now you're saying the budget is balanced because the cuts worked. And just to be clear, when I say you, I'm speaking to the board majority. I was going to say Mr. Castagna or Dr. Castagna too, but you got me with the P V S data tonight, so. Got a little soft spot right now. The ones who've driven these decisions, the ones who have consistently chosen cuts over creativity and optics over long-term solutions. This doesn't apply to the board members who have spoken up for our students and pushed back against this approach. Their leadership matters, especially in a year when voters are watching closely. But let's be clear, budgeting about, balancing a budget by eliminating people and opportunities for students is not a financial strategy. It's damage control, not sustainability. The budget only balances because you cut until it did, not because new revenue came in, not because costs were restructured, and certainly not because student needs decreased as you showed tonight, because they haven't. For two years in a row, you've chosen not to raise taxes, not even modestly. That may sound responsible, but the message is clear. Protecting a flat tax rate matters more than protecting classrooms, staff, and programs. Meanwhile, tonight's agenda includes two six thousand dollar per month consulting contracts. One for finance and accounting to bring back our former finance director, even though you've already hired a replacement who should be qualified to do the work. And one for STEM curriculum consulting, even after you've already spent one hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a STEM consultant not long ago. You didn't generate new revenue. You didn't ask the community to share in the solution, you just took things away. This approach, cut until the numbers work, isn't strategic. It's not a plan, it's just subtraction. I'm asking for more than a I'm asking for more than a spreadsheet that adds up. I'm asking for transparency, for long-term thinking, and for leadership that puts educational experience, the educational experience of students, not just numbers, at the center of every decision. Because if this is what you call balance, our students are paying the price. And I just want to add real quick, this wasn't on here. I love everything you said about data, love it. I love that you looked at P VAST. But my concern is, with all these cuts, also, education research shows that smaller class sizes make a difference. Our class sizes are going to grow. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Harry O'Connell, 149, Jerry Tree Road. I'm going to briefly, try and briefly, talk about 11.6, 11.7. Really, it's just some food for thought for the board. I found it very interesting, the two proposals for the consulting contracts or agreements. 11.6 related to a max cost of $6,000 per month with Dunright LLC and CBSD. Noticing that Dunright LLC was piled on March 18 of 2025, and then learning that the owner of Dunright LLC was armed. Right. I didn't know that, so I thought that was very interesting. I'm not sure that all of the community members did realize that. Again, this all goes back to this whole concept of transparency and the board being honest and open with the community. I opened up the PDF, noticed a statement of work that was very general, very broad description. There were no parameters provided. There was nothing about hours that we performed, how our invoice is going to be generated, who is going to pay for the services, who would keep track of everything. As Dr. Castagna, you pointed out yourself, Ms. Wright is leaving and going to Carnegie Museums as the CFO, as well as other very prestigious titles, as of April 22 of 2025. When is she going to have the time to be this consultant for $6,000 per month? And finally, as the, I'm so sorry, I forgot her name. And I pointed out, we already have a replacement hired. A quick Google search shows that she is quite capable in her job. Why is she unable to ensure that the fiscal year is wrapped up? Is there a reason why Ms. Joan Weiner is incapable of carrying on the responsibilities of Ms. Wright that she should be granted or given? $6,000 a month from the execution of the state until July 31st? None of these, this is food for thought. This doesn't make sense to me. I'm not up there. It doesn't make sense to me. I can't imagine it makes sense to other people. I appreciate that Mr. Zisis, who was a former teacher, I know he's retiring, is being offered a contract. But again, no parameters are being set. There are no parameters. You guys don't put anything in that says how the work is to be formed. How are you going to keep track of the hours? Is it based on an hourly rate? Who's going to do? I know you're cutting me off, sir, I'm well aware. I'm well aware, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. I have full confidence in our new business manager. The way administrative Act 93 and administrative contracts work with school districts is, until you are hired by the next school district, you don't resign from your previous school district. And then you submit your resignation, and then that board has their next meeting and accepts your resignation. And they can hold you for 60 days from that meeting. So, Ms. Wright gave us the 60-day notice February 8th, and we said, "We will get you, keep her till April 8th," which she's actually going to stay till then. But our new business manager of school is holding her till the end of the month. So, we have no business manager effective Thursday, which is why the consultant agreement came to fruition. I made this recommendation to the board for both, A, to fill the gap, but also, we have to finalize a budget. And as a new superintendent coming in January, I had to roll my sleeves up and dive in. Beth is the only administrator here that's been in the position since August. So, we have to get the final budget to be accurate. So, we're going to be calling on her anyways. It would only be fair to have a consulting agreement. The reason I asked for the agreement with our educator that's retiring, he's very familiar with the STEM robotics program. CS4All was a program I celebrated when I interviewed here about the accomplishments I had in the previous district. Mr. Zisis is actually going and presenting at the CS4All conference next week. So, I need a teacher inside that teachers can relate to, and that's why I asked the board. I do expect his to be at a year agreement, and Ms. Wright, just to get us through our final budget. So, I just wanted to add some clarity.
Alexa Soretti, Sunrise Drive, call your township. I wanted to speak about Agenda Item 12.2, graduation requirements. English, math, science, social studies, health, phys ed, electives, and arts and humanities are the current graduation requirements at CB. The proposed requirements eliminate arts and humanities as a graduation requirement. To date, other schools like Keystone Oaks, Upper St. Clair, and Mount Lebanon are still including them. It's three credits, no big deal, right? But it is a big deal, given our larger political environment and other recent class cuts. In its more than 900 pages, the Heritage Foundation authored Project 2025. Broader policies have already led to actions that significantly impact funding, programming, and the ideological direction of our educational institutions in this country. So, what do we do at CB? We're eliminating arts and humanities as an area of focus. It's no longer a graduation requirement, it's no longer a priority. Sadly, I see a trend here. We eliminate classes like AP Psychology, which helps kids understand human behavior and gain insights into themselves and their classmates. Macroeconomics, which helps them understand the overall performance and behavior of our global economy. And now, we're taking away arts and humanities as a requirement. Slowly dismantling the classes and programs that promote critical thinking and connect us to each other and the rest of the world is antithetical to my values. I have a feeling others in this room and elsewhere agree with me. Please rethink this. Thank you.
Alyssa Kowrich, 320s on Rose Drive. I'm going to be speaking on 11.7 and 5.2. Could you get closer to the microphone? I'm going to be speaking on Agenda Items 11.7, excuse me, and 5.2. The SOW attached to the agenda is a complete joke. Anyone who has ever worked in a professional capacity and contracted services would know that a statement of work should spell out the services to be provided with clear goals and KPIs to measure effectiveness of the services. The amount of money that this school board has spent without proper RFP process to acquire competitive bids and with no clear goals is ridiculous. All SOWs should have clear objectives and success criteria. My remarks were thrown a little bit off because I also agree with a lot of what Dr. Castagna said earlier today. I believe that we are data-driven, we should be data-driven, our children deserve that. They should get a good education. But we need to do that in a data-driven manner, and we need to prescribe. If you are paying money to any consultant, you need to transparently tell us what you are paying for and how it is going to improve our district. The untransparency of this school board to do things behind closed doors without explaining to the public what you are doing just makes us all doubt you and think that you are not out for the best interests of our children. I did appreciate Dr. Castagna's remarks, but again, I believe that without the needed transparency and the data-driven instruction and the data-driven contracts, there will be no improvement. So, I urge you to follow that and put clear parameters and success criteria around every contract, as well as all RFPs that go coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to announce that we had an intensive session prior to this public to discuss personality rule and safety matters. Onto the superintendent's report.
Yes, Dr. Mariano used that opening announcement to cover this so the public could see it before we were coming. So, that was nutrition group, and then obviously our presentation.
Perfect, thank you. Solicitor's report. You know, my report tonight, I'd just like to draw to the board's attention two optional tax credit programs that are offered for the board to consider at a future date. One is the volunteer service tax credit. That is a maximum $500 tax credit on county real estate taxes or earned income taxes for fire, volunteer fire member, department members, or nonprofit emergency service members. So, that would entail a passing resolution, setting criteria, having an application process. If they meet all the criteria in that resolution, then those individuals could be entitled to a maximum, it's not automatic 500, it's a maximum $500 tax credit. The other that's not listed on my report is the Act 77 Senior Tax Relief Credit, and that is for seniors age 60-plus who have had 10 years or more ownership in their real estate and have an income threshold of $30,000 or below and have to apply a $30,000 deduction. So, those are two credit programs the board should maybe think about or consider or talk about at a future date.
Mr. Rakounis, can I have some clarification on the volunteer? Would those be individuals who are volunteers?
That's correct, yeah. Those individuals, it's not for the entities themselves, it's for the individual service members. That's correct.
Yeah, I was contacted by Allegheny County. Yeah, I was contacted by Patrick Patina, the president of Allegheny County Council, and he is asking all school boards to consider this. Currently, East Allegheny started this for their volunteer fire department, and I thought it was a good idea. I sent it to Mr. Rakounis to bring up this evening. So, if you go to East Allegheny's website, and maybe at the next board meeting, we can put it under informational, there's a list of criteria that a volunteer fireman would have to meet, so many calls, so many hours on duty, and they would get up to a $500 credit on their school taxes. But as he said, Allegheny County is asking school districts to look at this. And in that vein, there's also, which we don't permit, but I asked Dr. Rakounis to look at, Act 77, which permits anybody making under $30,000 a year in our district to receive, I believe it's 30% of their taxes to be waived. And that would help, obviously, given that Allegheny County raised taxes 36%, and Scott Township raised taxes more than 50%. So, just looking for ways for other people, you know, to at least help them get through this time. Now, the Act 77, actually, through Allegheny County, we would just adopt a resolution in the future for it, and all their applications go to Allegheny County, and no matter where they live, they get that. The volunteer firemen would be for our core municipalities. But, you know, it's something to talk about, and at the next board meeting, we can share some of those letters that are received, and people can look through them.
Thank you, that concludes my report. Okay, moving on to the 7.0 board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for March 11, 2025? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Tura, second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the CB orchestra and band to travel to the Poconos to participate in the PMEA All-State Orchestra and Band from April 9 through April 12, 2025? Motion made by Miss Heen, second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the robotics team to travel to Cleveland, Ohio to compete in the first robotics competition from April 3 through April 5? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Tura, second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, do we have an update on how they did? I watched some of the competition but didn't see it till yet.
12 out of 56.
12 out of 56? Thank you. Very well done.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the partnership with the University of Pittsburgh's Athletic Training Department to allow a student trainer for the fall 2025? Motion made by Miss Heen, second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report for March 11, 2025? Motion made by Mr. Montani, I have a second, second by Miss Heen. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the proposed final budget for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $79,015,195 with a real estate tax rate of 20.1909 mils, which represents no tax increase. The secretary of the board is hereby directed to make copies of such proposed budget available for public inspection in accordance with the requirements of the school code at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the budget. And the secretary is hereby further directed to give not less than 10-day notice to the public of the meeting at which the final budget shall be adopted.
of the meeting at which the final budget shall be adopted. Such meeting set for May 27th, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
So made.
Motion made by Miss Heen, I have a second. Second by Mr. Brodsky. This needs to be a roll call vote, so Kelly, can you please call the roll?
Do we not get discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, there isn't, yeah. Discussion, you're right, there's no, yeah. Yeah, so let's discuss it.
Yeah, so just one thing I wanted to follow up that was based on community comments. And I think you alluded to this too, Dr. Castagna. Is there flexibility in there? Should we have to change our staff allocation or number of staff in lieu of class sizes or anything like that when we get into the fall?
So the way I describe this, since 2011, I've been asked this question as superintendent. This is a roadmap for next year, okay? This is your best guess 15 months ahead, right? Because we're not really going to go into effect until July 1st. And we can only use the data we have today. So it is always adjustable. It just becomes next year's problem for the following budget, right? So if mid-year you have influx of students and we say, hey, there's 34 kids in a class in third grade, we need to add a teacher, absolutely. It's just, we're going to know, hey, remember the budget we passed in April? That's changing now, we have to count for that moving forward. So nothing is ever concrete when it comes to school budget.
All right, thank you. Because I'm thinking of using the maps and using data-driven instruction. If we find out that there is a particular need in a certain area and we need that person, do we have that flexibility? So your answer for that is yes, we can always go back and look at that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I want to thank Dr. Castagna for being absolutely fantastic.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Dr. Castagna, thank you so much. Beth, thank you so much for the presentation. It was absolutely eye-opening and fantastic information. Thank you.
Yes, I know this was difficult. And this is, again, just the preliminary proposal of the final budget. But, you know, Act showed us these numbers last year. This wasn't a surprise. So, and I know even going on now, there's still people, you don't know how many people are going to be curtailed or if anybody's going to be curtailed, given that there were 30 PRI takers. However, that most likely will happen after the proposed final budget will occur. Correct, Dr. Castagna?
As it stands today, yes.
And the reason for that is why?
So we are following the contractual language as defined in the collective board agreement. So we are bound to that July 15th date currently, which won't allow us to begin our bumping bidding with the furloughs until after that date.
Okay, so if any hires happen, given the current outlook, they would happen after the July 15th date. And we start school somewhere in the third week, I believe, of August.
Yes.
So you'll be extremely busy for that month.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Kelly, please call the roll.
Mr. Brodsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mrs. Rory? Mr. Olenger?
Yes.
Mr. Montani?
No.
Mrs. Sexton?
Thank you.
Mrs. Trainer? No. Miss Heen?
Yes.
And Dr. Mariano?
Yes. Moving on to 11.2. May I have a motion to approve the March 2025 payments for the 2024-2025 annual budget, including charter schools in the amount of $9,943,746 and 2 cents? Motion made by Miss Heen, may I have a second? Second by Miss Rory. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the construction invoices for completed work through April 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Tura, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Brodsky. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve Hug International as the broker of record for insurance services for the district? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Brodsky. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, can we just give the public some clarification as to why we're on this route?
So we issued an RFP, I believe in February, we approved several RFPs to go out. And we received proposals from companies which we then reviewed. And this is the recommendation that we are making. They have locked in their commission, which is lower than the current commission that is this current school year, I believe $3,500. And it's a flat commission rate going forward. So they are just the broker of record, and they go out and solicit the best deal for the district. And this is something we could discuss with the board annually or every two years, whatever. One of the things I recommend to the board is you should always keep your brokers competitive and constantly seek out these RFPs.
So this is an acceptable and common practice to do this, to review this every year as in our best financial interest, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
They're the broker of record right now, so they're no longer the broker of record.
So it's usually?
You can't do it every year.
Yeah. Yeah, like, so if you don't get good service, you would then, you know, go out again. Or, I mean, with insurances. I mean, look at my insurance, you know, it goes up every, so every, so often you need to make sure you keep people in check.
So there's no length of contract here? It's just as is until we change?
Yeah, they're just the broker. The contract would be then with every mutual or all state.
This is just the negotiator, the broker.
Right. Gotcha, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve C S A Architects as the architect of record for the district under the fee structure provided. This will be the replacement of the current architect of record.
So made.
Motion made by Miss Heen, may I have a second? Second by Miss Rory. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I need some clarification as to who these people are because the document we have is very contradictory and the website that is listed does not function. So I kind of just need some clarification as to who this actually is.
Sure. Okay, so this is C S Architects. These are two architects that joined together and created C S Architects. They are both out of Pittsburgh. Their last school construction projects, they led a green project. This was actually for UPMC and Giant Eagle in the Pittsburgh area. I thought I was at the school projects page. Okay, Point Park University, they just did the renovations downtown for student housing. They did the Steel Auditorium at California University of Pennsylvania. St. Vincent College, they just redid their freshman dorms. And then the St. Vincent College, they built a student center. So that would be their most recent All-Star P T I. It was actually in discussions with Portland, right? Their student housing, they remodeled that as well, but that looks like that was a couple of years ago. So those were our latest education projects.
I'm just asking, who is it? Because it says C S Architects at the top, then it says TKA, then it has a website for a TKC.com that doesn't work. So I'm not entirely sure who this is we're hiring.
So the company we're hiring, the proposal they submitted was under C S A. The gentleman that submitted the proposal, his name is Felix Gardella. He is the president and he was formerly with TK. This is the way I understand it. You're not paying these people anything until you ask them to do work. And their fee structure was that the 5% fee, which was all the proposals I looked at, was 5%. We just wanted somebody that was not involved with any former projects in the Charlotte Atlantic District because we've run into issues with former projects. And that was one of the reasons I went with this direction and the price being the same. You do not pay them until you tell them to go draw something. Now, one of the projects possibly on the horizon is going to be fixing this building. And when that time comes, they would get paid the 5% of that project fee.
So this is, this is in direct connection to work at the I S? Since we're not talking about any of the indoor athletic facilities or any of that stuff?
This is whatever direction the board gives. They're going to be the architect of record, just like you give them insurance broker of record. They're going out, this is the architect of record. So your next project, whatever it is, one of the reasons I've thought of that, I misspoke, I'm looking at it. But whatever your next project is, there, you don't have to come back and hire an architect. You have an architect record. You tell them, hey, the board majority has to vote and give them direction to say, we want you to draw this project. And then they would be able to build it. But it could be, it could be anything. It's not directly related to this, it's not directly, it's not related to any project right now. You're just wanting the new architect that wasn't attached to anything.
So similarly to the insurance stuff, it's on an as-is basis?
Yes.
It is, however, I mean, just to be clear, if we go inside in the high school to fix the high school gym, to fix the accessibility issue of the pool and the athletics there, we would use whatever we chose here, C S A Architects.
Did you ask them to clean up their proposal for cost savings?
So you would have to, you would have to board approve any project.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why I ask these questions because as we've heard, the questions about specifics and clear-cut things, I mean, when you can't even tell who the person actually is in this proposal, that makes me have a little bit of concern. I would feel a lot more comfortable even if it just is the architect of record, if that was clarified so we know where our money is going.
Well, you're not spending anything tonight. You're just naming an architect.
Well, potentially.
You're not going to spend any money until you give them a project. And you, if you meet with them and you don't like them, you don't have to give them any work. You could, see, the majority of us don't want to give this person any work. You could go along with another architect.
Okay.
Please, please, the board's discussing this.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I'm asking because there is a lack of continuity between the name on the letterhead, the name in the letter, and then at the bottom of the page in terms of the address and the contact that's there. Then again, it doesn't work. I tried the website, it doesn't work. So that did bring me a little bit of concern. I understand the purpose of said person or group, but it's just not fair for who it is, and that worries me just a little bit.
And that's totally the board's decision on the other side.
Why don't you just put the person's name in there and we'll keep the motion?
Well, I think.
Because if you're hiring the firm, you're not hiring the person.
Exactly.
Exactly. C S A Architects, yeah.
But then why does it say TKA will take on certain things in there? See what I mean, but there's, it's not very clear.
That could be a doing business ads, it could be a lot of things. I mean, honestly, I looked at proposals and the rate was the same and they weren't attached to any project. I'm not, you know, a certified architect, to me, is why I'm making the recommendation and the rate. Again, we don't, you don't have to do this. You can put it back out, you can interview the architects if you want. I'm just, for the sake of efficiency, I'm just trying to knock, check boxes.
Okay, but just.
But you're not spending any money.
We're not spending any.
You're not spending any.
No. This is just the architect for anything in the future and that would need to come in front of us anyway.
A hundred percent.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just going to say what I'm concerned about is we've gotten burned so many times, obviously, here. So my concern is, I don't, the website, I don't know who this is you're talking about. So we're saying we're just putting a name to it, but I feel like it really is, we have to be more critical of who we are picking. We don't want some, we don't want just some guy to show up and, you know.
No, I agree, and trust me, neither do I. It'll just make more work for me, I promise you. Again, I feel confident that we're moving in a different direction than we have in the past. But, you know, again, these aren't contracted positions. These are just professional services. You don't owe these people an explanation if you want to move on from them, you know. That's how, that's how the professional services work. You're not signing the contract, you're not going into a law, you're not bound by anything. And you're not, I'm not asking to spend any money tonight. I just wanted to have someone in place.
So we can, we can get rid of them at any time.
Yeah, you just have to name, they're the broker of record, like the insurance broker of record, the architect of record. They're the person of record until they aren't, until you replace them with someone else.
We asked them to give us a limited presentation.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
So would that mean we're tabling this until we get that presentation that Mr. Olenger's asked for, or what are we doing here?
It doesn't matter because we can, we can remove it. So. Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the consulting agreement with C P dot right LLC for financing and accounting services at a maximum cost of $6,000 per month? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second? Second by Miss Heen. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, just to get final clarification on this. This is a, correct me if I'm wrong, a stopgap between Beth leaving and, drag a mic on your name, I'm sorry, your official start date, correct? Which is, which is July 1st, your official start date?
End of the month.
End of the.
She'll start at the end of the month, that was her 60 days with Central Valley.
Okay.
We're coming here, we're asking just to stay on until we get the final budget.
And this is a map, so it's not an actual group?
Yes, correct.
How is that determined though?
It's really up to the board. I mean, obviously, you're going to ask me, you know, I, I've been in this situation in multiple districts. Willy Hill still calls me, let's be honest, when they need help. But there's a limit to that, okay? I think it's fair to miswrite because we're going to call on her. I mean, I, I couldn't have built that.
And I understand that too because this is the budget that she kind of shepherded throughout the year and she's kind of finishing it and.
Okay, I have full confidence in our new business manager, I know she's going to be fine.
I do as well, I'm just saying, I was just trying to get an understanding of what this was for certain. So this is just a stopgap because we have a budget due within the next month and we're kind of in between two finance managers and two businesses, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So am I to understand this is only for one month's time?
No.
How many months is it for then?
Up to six.
Up to six?
Up to July, because that's.
So not six months?
So be available to address any issues or no calls or, or pay any issues, but the primary parties can take the general fund budget finalized and house with the state.
All right, that makes sense to me, thank you.
So that's four months?
Yeah, but it goes through to the beginning of the school, beginning of school year, correct? Is that why it's six months?
Yes, it's a lot.
Who said six months?
I don't know, I thought, I just, I thought somebody said that.
Somebody said six months?
Yeah. My, my goal almost is to get through the final budget. And again, you're going to call, we're going to call on her anyways.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, yeah.
Um, I just have a question.
Yes.
A few, sorry. Um, would, no offense to Beth, and you did a lovely job, and no offense to you, but did this happen whenever she, you know, the transfer went ever path left?
Yeah, we did the same thing.
The same amount? Like, I'm just saying, maybe it should be like prorated, or per, like, based on like per COCO or hourly or something, like that would seem more, like, reasonable.
I, I don't, I don't know if that, but I will say this, I mean, you're in a pretty unique situation, that you've had a superintendent for 90 days, your business manager's leaving in April, it's, it's not typical, you know, a lot of administrative movements happen in the summertime. These mid-year moves are tough, you're trying to figure out, you know, a lot of information, you're trying to, I just want the budget to be right, and I think we all have full confidence in her to do that, but again, ultimately, it's the board's, it's the board's decision. I, I will say this, and again, please, I'm not being disrespectful here, but, you know, board members, this motion, motion went to you all Friday. If we wanted to talk about specifically what Ms. Wright was going to do, she's still on staff here, we could have talked about this in the exact.
Absolutely.
Nobody have any questions about any of this stuff? And then we're going on forward, so I'm just saying, please, when you read things I sent on Friday in the, in the, in the, you're privy to these days before the rest of the public, please fill the questions we can answer.
By the way, for the board's information, this, this district has done this numerous times. We've done it before Beth only came on, Dave Sharobi, we've done it before Dave Sharobi came on, this has been done at least five to 10 times.
We just paid people lengthly for a month of work?
This is not meant for embarrassment in any way she performed. These questions are to get specifics as to where our money is going, because clearly we're providing our money. Right? So I have absolutely no problem with Beth sticking around to do this, because clearly she does a fantastic job, but we owe it to the public to be clear about how we spend our money, because that's what we all talked about, was transparency, so let's be there.
And that's, that's what I was trying to say, I meant, no disrespect to you at all, Beth, I'm not saying you're not worth it, I'm not saying any of that, or that, you know, or that she's not capable of handling it herself. I just, the position we're in right now, with the budget deficit and the things we're cutting, I'm just looking at little ways to save money like that, and just asking, you know, why is it just blanketed at 6,000 or a MAPS? That, that was my question.
But personnel should have been done in executive section.
Well, it's pretty bad.
Period. Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the consulting agreement with Frank Sizzitts for STEM curriculum services at the maximum cost of $6,000 per month? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Heen. Any discussion on this item?
Yes. So we need a timeframe here. Are we talking, it says it starts August 1st, right? So is this consultant?
For one year.
For one year? Okay.
Believe it is.
All righty.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 200, Enrollment of Students?
Second.
Motion made by Miss Heen, second by Mr. Snyder. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 217, Graduation Requirements? Motion made by Miss Heen, second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed?
No.
The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 815.1, Use of General Artificial Intelligence in Education? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Heen. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed?
No.
The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 815.1, Use of General Artificial Intelligence in Education? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Heen. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, Dr. Sable, just to clarify again, I think I asked this at the last meeting, but this is, correct me if I'm wrong, a new policy that's being implemented, not like, I know sometimes we revise existing policies, but this is a new policy related to AI, right?
Correct, um, this is, I was actually in a PA data summit, they were talking to school districts, saying that they should adopt the policy, this is put out by PSBA, we just modified it a little bit to make it, uh, Shore Valley appropriate. So yes, this is a brand-new policy that should be implemented in all school districts soon across the state. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion passes. Mrs. Heen?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the time when we invite the residents to speak on non-agenda items, and we ask you again to keep their comments to three minutes. Pal, did anyone sign up?
Yes, first, Samantha Fulmer.
Samantha Fulmer.
Hello. Samantha, she's my hard name. Good evening again, Samantha Fulmer. Samantha Fulmer, Green Tree Road, Scott. You know, I've already spoken tonight about the budget, but I need to use this time to speak about something bigger, the long-term direction of this district, or more accurately, the lack of one. Right now, this board majority, majority is operating without a vision. They're cutting staff, reducing programs, reacting to shortfalls, and just now attaching our name to someone who can't even submit a professional document, with the name on the header matching the information on the footer, and no second thoughts about it, except for those that spoke up, thank you. And you're calling this a plan? You're moving from crisis to crisis, year to year, with no clearly articulated strategy for how you'll stop bleeding resources, because you just spent $12,000 per month, two teachers' salaries, at least, support and people. And yes, I am talking specifically to the voting majority who has enabled and advanced this approach. Thankfully, not every board member has. There are members at this table who have stood up for students, questioned this process, and fought for transparency. Their voices matter, and this election season is a chance for the community to make that clear. Where is the roadmap? Because without one, you're not leading, you're just managing decline. Meanwhile, students are living in the fallout. These cuts aren't abstract. They're larger class sizes, fewer supports, and trusted teachers, gone. The cost of your decision is being felt every single day. And let's talk about staff. You've overseen staggering turnover at the administration level in just the past year. Directors, department heads, building leaders, that level of churn doesn't just affect operations, it disrupts continuity, trust, and culture. What are you doing about that? Because if the answer is nothing, then let's be honest, your remaining staff isn't just undersupervised, they're being set up to burn out. I asked at the last meeting, what's the plan? I'm still waiting. You can't rebuild a district by hollowing it out. And finally, communication. Again, let's be honest, your approach has been reactive, limited, and closed off. Major decisions are made behind the scenes and shared when it's too late for the public to engage. That's not just, that's not transparency, that's last-minute justification. If you are serious about rebuilding trust, start listening, start engaging, start leading, because if nothing changes, you'll be back here next year facing the same problems, but with fewer people left to cut. This isn't just about finances anymore, this is about values, this is about leadership, and it's time for both to show up. Thank you.
Next is Harry O'Connell.
Um, Harry O'Connell, 49, Green Tree Road. So I'm going to just, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to speak from the heart here, just sort of, you guys have to talk, stop taking things so personally. Mr. Olinger, do I say your name right?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Yes, I apologize. I'm still trying to get everybody's names correctly. That, none of that was a personal affront to you. Literally, this was amazing to watch you all actually engage in a discussion about the things you were voting on. And somebody, before there was this quick, we have to vote now, on the construction bid thing with the three different names on the, on the letterhead, um, reference, me reference to a, a presentation, and everybody's seen the light of that idea, and everyone's talking about it at the table, and then the next thing you know, it's like we're voting on it now. I have absolutely no idea what happened there, there was a clear communication breakdown amongst all of you. You just have to do a better job. And if that's in your executive session, this session, talking about how you bring that in and make that a little tighter, I don't know which one of you suggested having them come in into a presentation, but that was a great idea, and it could have been table, why couldn't you table it? For one meeting, was it really going to hurt you? I understand Dr. Sable's saying, wait, you're trying to get, you're trying to check things off the list, but was that really going to hurt? Everybody is trying to rebuild trust, you know that people do not feel trusted with the board anymore, they just don't. You're working on it. I absolutely love hearing you guys talk today. I loved it, you were actually speaking to one another. You didn't have to agree on it, and you don't, you don't have to keep it behind, behind votes or. What's the point of having a discussion before your votes, if you're only going to talk about it in executive session? Why have a discussion? Ms. Wright, I meant no offense, none whatsoever, it is a legitimate question that people ask, because there is so much distrust, so much has happened. It looks shady. It just does. I have no doubt that you have done a wonderful job, and will continue to help CB move forward, and help, I, I'm assuming, ma'am, you are the new individual, I'm sorry, I'm really bad with names, but it doesn't look, it just looks shady, and all I'm suggesting is make it look transparent, that's all. And you guys did that, and it, by answering everybody's questions. Can I just make one more comment, Dr. Sable, about the data-driven information you gave us earlier? I thought it was wonderful, I agree, I think that from where, from what you say, it was wonderful. I don't know much about it, I heard data-driven, I heard standardized tests or testing results. I do have a question you may not be able to answer, maybe this is something, maybe addressed later on. I do data, I do standardized tests, I have two children in this district, one of them is right there, they are both neurodivergent, they will not do well, and have not done well on standardized tests. What is the plan, when we're talking about data-driven, for our students who are not going to do well in standardized testing?
And that's, that's the point of the growth model, right? The growth model is to lead students to how they enter your room, and to grow, and for that situation, there are obviously accommodations, adaptations. What you're speaking of is that end-of-year final summative exam, which I agree with you, I mean, the example I gave with students coming in two years behind the grade level, and then them not being proficient, and the teacher saying, I grew them a year and a half, so that's why the growth and the value-added assessment model is so valuable. We just want to show that your child, or any child, is growing. So your situation is different, and it's more specific to you and your child, and I can obviously talk to you more about this after the meeting, but that's why I want to focus on growth.
Okay, all right, so it's not specifically about tests?
No, correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, and I would just like to add on about the MAPS too, because as a teacher, we use the MAPS in my district, and it is more like child-specific, so that, and that would go just to the teacher, and that would just be to help the teacher develop a plan for kids who have similar needs or similar weaknesses, that they could group them together, and obviously, that teacher would know the, the more specifics of your child, and, and, or why they didn't, you know, didn't do well, or did better than, you know, they would use that. So it's just a really helpful tool, more so for the classroom use, to, to help them with PSSAs or future tests later on. So it's more of that, just so the teacher can have a plan to help develop the child. So I hope that helps.
Next is Rich Poploski.
Hi, my name is Rich Poploski. I swear I'm going to have a heart attack, can't hear from anybody.
Can't hear you.
I swear I'm going to have a heart attack, because I get really upset, so I'm really trying not to today. I appreciate you all being here. I'm still concerned about subcontracting our drivers, I don't think it's the right thing to do. I'm additionally concerned about why we have so many, all our doors manned by security, and we have a lack of our school resource officers here. I, I certainly hope that we don't ever think of getting rid of our drivers, or having school resource officers in the school, we need our police officers, although I'm sure they're great people, they're no substitute for our local police officers, and I would hate to see that coming up in the future, that would be very detrimental. I think Officer Abel at the intermediate school, is a wonderful man, and this school needs him. I would like to read a letter, if this time my phone would work. Um, sorry. This, this, this letter is addressed to Timothy L. DeFor, the Auditor General of Abbesburg. Auditor General DeFor, we write to you with concerns about the Sharters Valley School District in Alliantine County. Recent media reports tell of the district facing a multimillion-dollar budget deficit that has led to the school board to take action last month, including furloughing several administrator staff, 1% of education support professionals, and up to 20 teachers. While as state-elected officials, we understand the complexity of school budgeting, and the difficult decisions that elected school board members must make, we were compelled to contact you on behalf of the many constituents who live within Sharters Valley School District, who have called, emailed, and reached out to us personally to voice their frustration with the governance and the financial oversight of the district. The most recent state audit of the Sharters Valley School District conducted by the Defunct Bureau of School Audits was released six years ago and covered the period of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2017. The taxpayers and families of the Sharters Valley School District deserve to know whether the district has complied with all relevant financial and budgeting requirements of the public school code, and whether the school board has acted appropriately as fiduciaries of public money. Therefore, we request that your office perform an audit of the governance and financial oversight of the Sharters Valley School District as soon as possible. Thank you, and we look forward to your response. This is signed by State Senator Wayne Fontana, State Representative Dan Dizzi, and Representative Adina Kulik. So it's not just us that are not seeing that something is, uh.
No more comments?
No more comments.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Montani, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Hine, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.